Farmington Hills, our regularly scheduled meeting for February 28th. Good evening, everybody. Sorry we were running a little late. I apologize. Our study session ran a little over. We will begin tonight with calling the regular meeting to order and beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is roll call.
Mayor Barnett?
Here.
Councilmembers. Buloware is absent.
She's excused.
Okay. Bridges?
He's also excused.
Bruce?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Massey?
Here.
And Newland?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the approval of the regular session minute meeting agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would move approval of the agenda as published.
Support?
It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Council by Dr. Bruce. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is as it is printed. Next item is a proclamation supporting efforts of the Farmington Area Commission on Aging for the prevention of elder financial abuse. Dr. Bruce, do you want to read that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Whereas over 3.5 million Americans, including many elderly people, are the victims of financial exploitation every year, and whereas the Education Committee of the Farmington Area Commission on Aging, COA, aims to ensure that all Farmington area residents have the opportunity to learn about the prevention of elder financial abuse before it happens, and whereas the COA Education Committee will undertake a variety of activities to educate seniors, professionals, families, financial institutions, Farmington area public safety representatives, elder care facilities, and other groups to ensure that residents have effective resources to combat elder financial abuse and help them should they become victims, and whereas we support the group and their efforts to assess the knowledge of community stakeholders on this issue and to create annual education programs to increase awareness about the prevention of elder financial abuse in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that Vicky Barnett, Mayor of the City of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby support the efforts of the Farmington Area Commission on Aging as they work diligently on the prevention of elder financial abuse and educate our community about this important issue impacting our senior population.
Okay, do we have somebody from the Commission on Children, Youth, and Families? I'd like to hand this off to you. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words? Yes.
My name is Julie McCowen, and I have Karina Weglarts and Dan Fantore with me. We are volunteer commissioners on the Commission on Aging. On behalf of the Commission on Aging, we would like to thank Mayor Barnett and the entire city council for recognizing in the proclamation our efforts to improve the financial well-being of our senior residents. The mission of the Commission on Aging is to promote community awareness, dignity, encourage dignity of older adults, and the well-being through advocacy and education. For those reasons, the Commission on Aging is spearheading, the Education Committee actually, is spearheading an initiative to prevent and address elder exploitation by educating and collaborating with citizens, local businesses, and community stakeholders. The Commission would like to recognize the ongoing support of Michael Bridges, who is not here today. Farmington Hills Police Department has been instrumental working with us, as well as Farmington Hills Senior Services Senior Division Supervisor Marcia Coet. I am a local attorney, and the reason that I really wanted to spearhead this and work with the Commission on Aging is I see it daily in my practice through guardianships, conservatorships, a lot of financial exploitation through caregivers, family members, and scams. So it's very dear to my heart, and I thank you for your ongoing support.
Thank you very much. I know that the legislature is trying to pass additional laws to protect against elder abuse and financial abuse as well. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is presentation from the Historic District Commission, the 2021 Annual Report. You guys have been busy.
Thank you. Yes, we have. It's our pleasure to present to you tonight the activities that we undertook in 2021. Do we have slides? Okay, thank you. The Farmington Hills Historic District Commission is charged with preserving historic districts within the city to address our, thank you, our cultural and societal and political history. In 2021, we had the commission members were Alec Thompson, Jim Paulson, John Truffulet, myself, Ken Klemmer, Lisa Martin, and Steve Olson. Newly appointed in 2021 were Marlene Tullis and Brian Brinkat, resigned from the commission. Our city council liaison was Valerie Knoll, of course, and our staff liaison is Eric Perdonick, and he replaced Angeline Lawrence, who was our long-term liaison. We set our goals in 2020 for the year of 2021. 2021 didn't turn out quite the way we thought it would, but we were able to accomplish, thank you, we were able to accomplish a number of those goals, primarily assisting the Spicer House in repair of the damage that occurred from the storm on the on the house. Cemetery preservation was a big part of our activities. Both of the city-owned cemeteries got a great deal of our attention. We started a oral history project, actually before COVID. That got waylaid a little bit, but we look forward to continuing that on in 2022. We had planned to conduct some workshops, which were delayed, and we plan to continue our reconnaissance surveys, looking for other historic properties to nominate to the register. So in 2022, we're continuing a number of those projects, primarily the Longacre House restoration is getting some attention, continuing work with the Spicer House, continuing our oral history project, and continuing Blue Book, which is the directory of city historic properties, continuing to update that. We had eight regular meetings in 2021. May, June, August, and September were canceled due to lack of business. Our primary goal is to review work in historic districts. We currently have approximately 70 historic districts within the city. Some of those activities were issuing certificates of appropriateness. I guess it's not going up there. There we go. We looked at the John Garfield House on 13 Mile Road, which received a new roof.
Ken, whenever you want to forward, just let me know, because you're not controlling it right now.
I'm not actually controlling anything.
They don't have you plugged in, I guess, so just tell me next slide and I'll do it for you.
Perfect, thank you. The Edward Chain House recently changed hands, next slide, I guess. There's the Edward Chain House that recently changed hands in 2021, and the new owners are putting a great deal of care into that home. It's been neglected for a little while. New gutters and downspouts and a new fence, next slide. The James Kane House in just across the street in Pasadena Park got new windows and a 1960s addition, and even though the addition was built in the 1960s, it's still considered part of the historic fabric of the home. Next slide. And Sarah Fisher, which has been long on the list here, has is moving forward with a notice to proceed for work based on the new development plans for the site. And I'll go into that in a little more detail in a bit. Next slide, please. So we made an amendment to a notice to proceed that we had issued in 2020 for the Sarah Fisher home. Many of the existing buildings that we had planned to preserve are no longer viable, so most of those are being removed. We are preserving the chapel, the entry gates, and the historic signage that's on the property. So there's some exciting developments coming there. You can see on the screen, this is a concept for repurposing the chapel building, which is going to be part of the assisted living complex. Next slide, please. Our cemetery work, as I mentioned, this is the West Farmington Cemetery at 12 and Halsted, which received a new fence in 2020, and we're continuing to do work on monuments and improving the grounds there, resetting monuments, and trying to take a little better care of the site. The West Farmington Cemetery has also received a great deal of attention at Halsted Road. It's okay, we're going all right. We were working on projects to reset monuments there and just to improve the overall appearance of that cemetery. We've done a great deal of community involvement in the restoration efforts, bringing scouting groups and other interested volunteers in the effort, bringing them into the effort of cleaning headstones and that resetting effort to level things out. Next slide, please. I already mentioned the Sarah Fisher Home Project, next slide. Spicer House has been an ongoing project as well since the tree fell on it in 2020. In 2021, some of the landscaping work at our recommendations was implemented, removing some other trees that were hazardous to the house, and we're now in the process of assessing a historic preservation plan and have solicited proposals from a historic preservation architect, actually the original one that worked on the project, and bringing them back into the process to guide the efforts going forward on that building. It is due to get a new roof as well. Next slide. And the Longacre House has a fieldstone wall, a really beautiful wall in front of it, which has suffered a great deal of damage due to settling and tree roots and vehicles over the last few years, so we are helping to assist them with the with the restoration of that distinctive stone wall. And that is our report. Are there any questions, please?
Anybody have any questions? Any comments? Yes. Councilmember Noel.
I don't have any questions, but just a couple of comments. First of all, happy, I enjoy being the liaison for the commission very much, and I want to thank the commissioners. They've done a great deal of work this past year, especially on the Sarah Fisher property. I want to thank them for their willingness to to work with the city and the council and the developer and kind of reengage, and thank you for your flexibility in that, and hopefully we'll end up with a really nice development there. So I know that took some compromise on many commissioners' parts, so thank you for that. And then also, I just also want to commend them for all the work they've done on helping preserve our cemeteries, our two historic cemetery, well, actually, we have three, but one is private, but the the city-owned cemeteries. Quite honestly, they need a lot more attention. They've done a great job by bringing in the Boy Scouts and helping clean the monuments to get the algae and mold off of it, but many of them need resetting. So as we come up to budget period, we're going to be working on budgets, I just want to put in a plug for many of the projects that were talked about tonight, whether it's the Longacre House needs improvements, the wall was mentioned, the stone wall, the Spicer House. The Spicer House needs major improvements. There's a lot of repairs that need to be done there. And then, of course, it would be wonderful to have some money also for the cemeteries for resetting monuments, but I just want to bring those three items up. As as the chair mentioned, they are working with the Special Services Division and our DPW on the cemeteries and the plans for the Longacre and Spicer, but everything takes money, and so we just have to be sure as a council, that is our responsibility, to budget money accordingly, so we can make sure these gems are protected for generations to come. So that's my plug.
That's why we love having you on that commission as the liaison. The oral history, where is that going to be stored? Are you you're recording it, correct?
Yes, yes, and we're working with the with the AV group within the city to record some of those oral histories as we as we gather them. That's still kind of in its infancy. We were delayed so long, so we're starting to regroup that process and look into it a little more seriously. That's a project that we're doing with the Historic Commission as well, as a partnership with them.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that, all coming together. I want to thank you for everything you've done. This is a labor of love. This is something that takes a lot of hard work, and as Councilmember Noel pointed out, it's not without its costs, but you certainly help us out a lot with that, and to preserve our history the way you are working toward it, I'm very gratified.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, do we need to approve the report, or it just?
You need to accept it.
Just a simple acceptance.
Is there a motion to accept the report?
So move it.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Noel. All in favor of accepting the Historic District Commission 2021 Annual Report, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, presentation from the Planning Commission, their 202021 Annual Report. Mr. Stimson, Chair. Hello?
Hello. I'll wait for it to come up here, I think, in a second. There we go. Okay, well, thank you for having me tonight. The commission members for 2021, myself as Chair, Dale Conigan as the Vice Chair, John Truffulet as the Secretary, Barry Brickner, Duke Orr, who resigned in November, Joe Manthe, Bob Turner, who also recently resigned in January, Steve Schwartz, and Marissa Varga. Major initiatives that we had in 2021 were the Capital Improvement Plan, a PUD for the Emerson, which is a apartment complex with two buildings located on Northwestern Highway, just a little east of Orchard Lake. So there'd be two multifamily buildings, one with 250 units, another with 66 units. The next one we sort of just heard about from the Historical Commission, which was a PUD for the Sarah Fisher property. And then the Chase Wood Villas is a new subdivision going in on Nine Mile, just east of or between Halsted and Hagerty for 28 new new homes in that subdivision by the former Athletic Club. In 2020, we had 19 meetings, which is a little more than than the past few years, a few extra joint meetings, and study sessions really comprised some of that, along with some additional site and PUDs. As you can see, we had 19 site and landscape plans come in front of us. Of them, 14 were approved, two were postponed, and three are on, we've seen already this year. There were some special approvals as part of that as well. We had seven lot splits, which is a little higher than normal, but all seven were approved. We had one zoning approved, one zoning change approved and one denied. We also made a zoning text amendment in 2020, 2021, and the cluster option, which we, I just went over at Nine Mile, the Pulte one. We had two PUDs qualified, and we approved seven PUDs. And these are really just a summary of those different event or different things. This is the site and special approvals, the cluster that we spoke about, the lot splits, rezoning requests. One one came to us and did not go to City Council. It was denied, and then the other one came in front of you for off of 12 Mile, or off of Grand River, for the, I believe that was the former dealership. And then the zoning text amendments, we saw one for the use of medical marijuana and caregivers, and then changing the definition of family in various sections of the zoning And here's our seven PUD plans that we saw in 2021, and the two PUD qualifications. And just an overview on the map of where the different events or different things that came in front of us for 2021 were in the city. And that is it.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? No. Any comments? I want to thank you so much. I know that the council is trying to work more closely with the Planning Commission to address maybe future needs and the master plan and smart city initiatives that may need zoning changes and things like that, and I want to thank you all on the Planning Commission for being such gracious hosts to us and welcoming us in and working with us. We really appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Lot of ideas on the table that float around. Some make us happy, some don't.
Lot of exciting things.
Yeah, it's great. So thank you, and please thank the commission for us.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Is there a motion to accept the report?
I'll make a motion to accept the Planning Commission report.
Okay.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilmember Noel, seconded by Dr. Massey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we've accepted the report. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence to report that we may not all have gotten? I have received several calls for the listening tour for the marijuana, the grow operations, and everybody who signed up, they would like to know as soon as possible if their name is on the list, so that they can begin preparing. So it's kind of a black hole to them whether they've been accepted to participate or not, and the the public hearings, they'll be on, will they be on YouTube, Zoom, our website?
We will be, that's actually my city manager's report, so we'll be providing that additional information for public input or public participation later on this later on this week in a press release.
Okay, and you will be reporting on that during your city manager update?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to let everybody know out there who's put their name in that we haven't forgotten you. Those tours will start, and you'll hear about those in a few minutes. Next is the consent agenda, and it will be read by our mayor pro tem, Mary Newland, and all items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the items may be removed from the consent agenda for consideration.
The consent agenda as published on items nine through 18. Number nine, a recommended approval of a ward of contract for Heritage Hills and Wedgewood Commons subdivision road replacement reconstruction phase two to Florence Settlement Company in the amount of $4,569,898.14. This is CMR 22214. Number 10, recommend approval of a ward of contract for the City Hall Campus Parking Lot Replacement Project to the Nagel Paving Company in the amount of $316,487.98 to CMR Number 11, recommend approval of a ward of contract for Armored Courier Remote Safe Services with PNC Bank in the total amount of $141,130 over a period of five years with possible extensions. This is CMR 22216. Number 12, recommend approval of a purchase of a 2022 Ford Police Interceptor Replacement Fleet vehicle from Signature Ford in the amount of $34,129,000. This is CMR 22217. Number 13, recommend approval of a ward of contract for the Farmington Freeway Industrial Park Phase One Commerce Drive Reconstruction Project to Mark Anthony Contracting, Inc. in the amount of $2132,547.07 to CMR 22218. Number 14, recommend approval of a ward of contract for the Whitlock Street Gravel Conversion Project to Hutch Paving LLC in the amount of $1446,335.40 to CMR 22219. Number 15, recommend approval of a ward of bid for the Uniform Laundry July Cleaning Services to Perfect Cleaners in the estimate amount of $25,000 per year for three years with possible extensions. This is CMR 22220. Number 16, recommend approval of an agreement with Flock Group, Inc. to provide license plate detection system technology and services. This is CMR 22221. Number 17, recommend approval of City Council Study Session Meeting Minutes of February 14th, 2022. Number 18, recommend approval of the City Council Regular Session Mini Minutes of February 14th, 2022.
Okay, is there a motion? Dr. Bruce?
Madam Mayor, I would move the approval of the consent agenda as read by the mayor pro tem. Support.
Okay, that's items number nine through 18.
Correct.
Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers. Bruce?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that brings us to public questions and comments. If anybody would like to address the council, please limit your comments to five minutes for any item of city business that is not on the agenda tonight, and I will now open the public comments section. Does anybody want to come forward? Nope. I will now close the public comments section, and we will move to council members' comments and announcements. Nope, it's a quiet night. Okay, city council, city manager update. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As the mayor was mentioning, the City of Farmington Hills plans on hosting three informational information gathering sessions with representatives from the commercial marijuana industry. Those three sessions will take place via Zoom, YouTube, and live streaming on the following dates. Session one is Tuesday, March 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. That will include growers of all classes, including as well as processors. The second session is also Tuesday, March 15th, but in the afternoon this time, from 2:00 p.m. to 3:30 p.m., and that will entail the retailers, testing facilities, and secure transporters. Session three will be held on Wednesday, March 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., and will be hosting microbusinesses, design consumption establishments, and temporary event organizers. Members of the public may be may ask questions of the cannabis industry representatives via email or Zoom chat. More information on how the public can participate and view the sessions will be available later this week. We just had a meeting this morning with staff to go over that. We will also be notifying the panelists for which sessions that they will be participating in very soon. Right, Pam?
Yes.
Yes. Certainly by the end of the week.
Yes, by the end of the week.
Okay, because some of them have been contacting the mayor and want to know if they're on the list, if they're not, and the sessions will start in two weeks, so they're coming up.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, thank you more. State of the City- State of the Cities, State of the Cities event is March 10th. And that's from 7:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. at The Hawk. Doors open at 7:00 a.m. for those interested in attending. Tickets are $25. You can contact the city manager's office for additional information on that. And our cultural arts division is hosting a public arts program, Open House, at City Hall on Friday, March 4th. That's this Friday from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., featuring 61 artists from Farmington Hills and surrounding communities. So, please stop on by.
Thank you. And if you want to hear the state of the cities, and I will give you a flourishing update on what's been happening in Farmington Hills, starting at 7:00 in the morning, my favorite time of day, please don't hesitate to buy a ticket, support our chamber, and come on out and hear about the state of the cities of Farmington Hills, Farmington, and our Farmington Public Schools.
Madam Mayor, I think Oakland Community College is going to be involved, so there's going to be a fourth presentation this week, this time.
Really?
Yes. It's the first time OCC has, so, yeah, I learned that at a chamber board meeting recently.
That's exciting. Okay, there's four for the price of one breakfast. You can't get any better than that. Next is a public hearing. The public hearing and consideration of an amendment to a planned unit development, PUD 5, 1993, including the site plan, SP 65-10-2021, to develop a portion of a parcel located at the south side of West Twelve Mile Road between Investment Drive and Drake Road.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the--
Mr. Gardner without glasses.
The item before you--
[laughing]
Do you recognize me now?
Now I do, yes.
The item before you tonight is an amendment to a PUD that was approved by City Council back in 1993. Goes back a long way.
Before my time.
This was a, a PUD which was going to house the National Bank of Detroit's corporate headquarters. And it was over 100 acres and it was a very exciting PUD. But a few months later, they were bought up in all of those bank wars back, back in the day. And that project was put on hold and subsequently the property and the PUD contract was sold to Kojan Properties. And they started developing the, the over 100 acre parcel, which extends from approximately on the south side of Twelve Mile from Halsted to almost Drake Road. So, it's a very important piece of property within the city of Farmington Hills. What we're talking about, though, is a little sliver of property, about two and a half acres. And that is what is before you tonight. The previous PUD plan and contract only saw, or thought that the development for this corporate entity would be just office uses, and that's what's allowed by the PUD contract. A couple of years ago, representatives from Kojan came to the Planning Commission and made a presentation that they wanted to have some amenities for this project, which would include some retail and some possible restaurant uses to service the needs of the, of the tenants within their corporate park. The Planning Commission felt that this was a major amendment to the PUD plan, so that's why we're going through this process tonight, and it's before you tonight. The Planning Commission reviewed the amended PUD plan and site plan at their December 16th, 2021 public hearing, and they have recommended approval to you. Following my brief history of this, of this area, the proponent, who is Michael Lawrence from Yamazaki, who is the architect for the project, and Tony Anton from Kojan are here to make their presentation. Following their presentation, Rod Arroyo from Giffords Webster, our planning consultant, will give the review of this proposal. It is a public hearing. Following the presentations, you should take public input prior to your deliberation and action. So, with that, I welcome the proponent to come up and--
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tony Anton with the Kojan Companies. And as Ed said, we've been involved with this project since we purchased it back in, I want to say, 1999. We started the development from the west and are heading east. We have essentially found, due to COVID and other factors, that amenities are critical now to the office market. We've had a lot of talks with folks who are coming back, who are thinking about coming back into the office buildings and either downsizing from larger to smaller, you know, you name it, all sorts of configurations. But amenities are critical now more than ever. We've had this on our minds for several years, but COVID really has amplified this need. So, I'm here with Robert Zantner and Mike Lawrence from Yamazaki and Mike McPherson from Atwell Hicks. Again, as Ed said, it's a small piece of our larger 134 acre parcel, but the use is considered a major change, so that's why we're here bothering you with such a small piece of land. But we do think it'll, it'll be an amenity for more than just our campus. We hope it'll be an amenity for this larger piece of Farmington Hills along Twelve Mile. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Yamazaki, and then we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mike Lawrence from Yamazaki, and I'm the guy that's on the PUD request. As Tony has mentioned to you, it's a very small piece, and we are proposing two small commercial buildings. I have a site plan for you guys. Ah, thank you. As you see on this plan, and it's right off of Twelve Mile and Investment Drive, our proposal is to develop these two buildings that will be a single story, and it'll be a shell and core at this particular time. Tony doesn't have a tenant yet, so the, the building that's to the north has the ability to have a drive-up window, and then there's a queuing line around the backside of the building. There will be appropriate landscaping, it's been proposed, around the building to give it appropriate look off of Twelve Mile. And we will be developing a retaining wall around the backside and making minimal impact into this wetland area that's to the backside of the parking side on the east side of the property. The trash collection for the, the site, we've got that screened. There's one at the north end, and then there are two others at the southern end of the site. And the circulation around the site will provide for appropriate emergency vehicle access for the buildings. We, we have a detention plan that's part of this project. As to not disturb this wetland, we will be taking a pipe from the hard surface over to a detention pond that is just to the southeast of the site, that's part of our site for the project. All of our, our mechanical systems will be screened on the roof, so you won't see those. And I think, I think it's going to be a great building. Robert has our color plan, it's not in the set that you have, it's in black and white, but the front of the building will be brick, have some brick, and we'll have a drive-it type of stucco system with storefront glass along the backside, or along the front side of the building and around to the back. These are going to be metal awnings that will dress up the front entrances of the building. And we're planning on having some little light fixtures that go along the, the front side of the building. And then there's a courtyard between the two buildings where people can go outside and have lunch, or there'll be some tables and, and chairs situated out there. Well, I didn't, we talked about the brick. So, if there are any other questions, I think that's, that's the, the essence of, of our design and the project there.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I've got one.
Okay.
You said you know, no tenants yet?
No.
Any potential tenants on the horizon here?
I can't answer that. Tony might be able to shed some light on that.
Yes, we are talking to a number of folks. It's a little bit of a chicken and an egg. They want to know that we can actually perform with the zoning, but we do have a lot of interested parties that we're starting to talk to, and they're anxious to hear how tonight goes and how our approvals go. And then I, we believe that we'll be off to the races.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
I have a few right now. Oh, well, let's hear from our consultant, and then I'll ask. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I'm just gonna, I'll be very brief. This, as you can tell, this is a fairly straightforward proposal, and the proposal is to amend previous PUD. This property, as you can see from the zoning map, it is all pretty much on the south side of Twelve Mile Zone OS4, and you've got RA1 zoning on the north side. This is the subject property. You see the aerial existing office development mostly as this corporate park continues to develop out. And then you have an expanded aerial here, and you can see other development that's occurring. As you say, mostly, mostly office consistent between 696 and Twelve Mile and mostly residential on the north side, along with several places of worship and some daycare centers on the north side of Twelve Mile. And then you had a chance to just take a brief look at the, at the plan. One of the things that I think, as they talked about, they're, they're attempting to provide for an opportunity for some of the office users to have a place to go for, to provide restaurants as well as to provide retail. One of the things that we note with this plan in particular is the pedestrian connection. There's a pedestrian connection on the north side, as you can see. So, if you're on Twelve Mile, you can come in. I don't know if this shows, it doesn't really show. On the north side there, just north of where the development, as you can see, there's a, there's a sidewalk that comes in and takes you right to the front. And then from the south side, if you happen to be in one of the buildings, office buildings along Corporate Drive, you can come in and easily access as a pedestrian from the south side as well. So, it has good connectivity to the rest of the park. In terms of the, the development itself, as they mentioned, there's two buildings as well as an outdoor dining area that is proposed. The outdoor dining is, is between the buildings, and then there's the potential for a drive-through for one of the locations at the north side of the building. In terms of the other site plan related items, they, they meet the other site plan requirements that are in the ordinance. This is OS4, but if this is approved for this limited piece here, they would be permitted to construct uses permitted in the B2 district. So, they're being, would be allowed to have those commercial uses, and they've specified what their desire is. So, that's my report. It's fairly brief, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I have just a few. The concerns from the Planning Commission on the building height and some of the other questions they had, are those all answered here in terms of the lighting and shielding some of the lighting and the height of the buildings? Because there was no discussion about the height of the buildings before, but I know that they had to be addressed.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're within the, the maximum height requirement, and they've made adjustments to the plan since the Planning Commission saw it to correct the items that were identified. So, this is actually a revised plan that has addressed the concerns.
Okay, and it's going to be screened with plantings all the way around the front? So, when somebody from the subdivision across the street looks out, they're going to see green space there?
Yes, as a matter of fact, all--
No, they're already buffered by a boulevard.
Sure. And all along Investment Drive and then turning around the corner there, there's going to be a low hedge row that will block the headlights. So, and, and that's been expanded to go kind of along the north side there. So, in the parking lot, if you're traveling north, that'll be there as well to shield those headlights. So, they've, they've enhanced the screening from what was originally proposed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions before I open the public hearing? Dr. Massey?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And this would probably go for the proponents. The, I'm hearing two buildings, one with food service, one with retail. And then this discussion that it would play into other commercial buildings, as people come back into the office environment, this provides some opportunities. Is the intent, and I think what I'm catching is the drive-through service. You know, there's a drive-through available. Is this, so on the restaurant piece, intended on being like a fast food restaurant? Or is this intended on being something that's going to be more an addition to the community as a restaurant that people might want to go to? That's the first part of the question. Related to that, are the hours as conceived by you now? I understand you're in negotiations, so. But are the hours just with business hours, or is this going to be open longer? And that gets into what Mr. Arroyo just said about the obstruction of headlights that would be driving through and so forth. And then on the retail side, is that a little shopping strip, shopping area? Or is it just aimed at the commercial side? Just, you know, what are your concepts?
Sure. Let me try to tackle those in no particular order. The, the, the drive-through is meant to be, could be potentially, most likely coffee, bagel, coffee, that sort of use. We believe that this is going to attract more of a breakfast, lunch type of user as opposed to the other. But the market would decide these sorts of things. We're, we've developed them after a study session with the Planning Commission as two buildings so that you could get four, what's called NCAPs, essentially, right? It really only lent itself to one drive-through. So, what will that be? We don't know yet. We believe it will be more of a coffee, bagel type of user. At least that's the folks who seem to be most interested when we're talking about this site to the retail world. It's not meant to be one building restaurant, one building retail. It's probably going to be a combination of, of both in both buildings type of thing. And again, we let the market decide these sorts of things. The zoning will be B2. I believe there are hours of operation in B2 that we would follow. It's, it's not meant to only be breakfast and lunch. It's meant to be whatever is allowable in the B2 district. So, if a retailer wanted to be open, you know, into the evening, then, then they would be allowed to, to do so. But again, I think we have everything covered so as to protect the residents.
Okay. And any lighting in the parking areas is going to be meeting our lighting ordinances so that we don't add to the light pollution that already is pretty intense from--
Absolutely.
--that area?
And all of the new developments that we're doing, I mean, the technology's amazing. It is, it just shines down. They have shields. The, you know, they're, they're not, they don't even, they don't go past where they're supposed to. So, those are all issues that have been covered.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody from the public that would like to comment, please come forward. So, anybody who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is officially closed. We're back to council. Any further questions? Okay, I do have a few. I'm assuming a dry cleaner, maybe, something that feeds into the amenities that people who are in office buildings may want, a convenient dry cleaner. I don't know, maybe a, a little restaurant that's open after hours for servicing the, the after-work activities and, as well as a drive-through like an Einstein's or something like that.
Yes, those are, those are exactly the types of folks that we're envisioning as well.
Okay, because I'm concerned about one thing. And when I drove down Twelve Mile Road, just west of Halsted, the McDonald's is now closed and that whole little strip mall. And I know that the Panera moved across the street, but I don't know where the barber went, and I know that the McDonald's is closed. Do you happen to know from friends in the industry what happened over there?
I don't know those particular-- I don't know those particular stories. I do know that it it seems that the McDonald's of the world are all sort of flocking to various other sites because Jersey Mike's and Jimmy John's and and Firehouse, you know, whatever the subs, those are the the new hot trendy fast, I don't want to call them fast food because they're not, but, you know, whatever you categorize those as, they seem to be the ones that are going into these types of centers and servicing the office market, if you will. So I can't speak to what happened to McDonald's or or why they moved. I don't know that. I do know that our research has shown, and our marketing people have told us, that there is still a need for more spaces for these sorts, especially as we continue to develop out the park. We have some potentially exciting things happening with our office park, a couple of large users who are looking at Farmington Hills, and we think that this will be a great thing to sort of place in front of them as to, here's what's coming.
Yeah. Well, I I like where this is located because it's it's easy drive-in, easy drive-out. And I think that was part of the problem with the McDonald's and the Panera, that it was really, that was a nightmare parking and entrance and out. I just, it was a mess.
Heard that about Panera, yeah.
Okay, so, don't do that.
No. They won't let us.
Don't do what they did. It wasn't good.
Right.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Okay.
I'm sorry. No, go ahead. Okay. So we hear Einstein, but would have ever this place be, the drive-through be big enough to, let's say, support a Starbucks? Like, I mean, I've never go past a Starbucks unless they're out the driveway and onto the streets.
So Starbucks is now wanting to do their own standalones. They're they're very, very focused on standalone sites, and so it probably will not be a Starbucks. But there's a lot of other coffee users that it could be. And there's, we've, we've, we've talked to some who we think will be good candidates for coming into the city of Farmington Hills.
Jersey Bagel, maybe? I don't know. Okay. Anything else?
I don't really have a question. I just, I'm extremely concerned about the the commercial office market and the viability of it going forward. I'm happy to hear that you have some potential interest, because I, so many office workers are continuing to stay at home. Companies are all kind of maybe going into a hybrid, but even then, it's, 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 they don't need as much space when you're in a hybrid and the work comes in once a week and and you're going to hoteling space. So I am concerned about it, and and so for that reason, I mean, I do support this, because if this is what, you know the industry, and if this is what you believe you need to attract offices back into the area, I'm all for it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. We have about 10 million square feet, and in in all of the major tenants that we talked to, there's a, there's about a 10% compression that we're seeing on average. Some industries, like you said, everyone worked from home. Some industries are growing. Accounting firms, we've grown, UHY in Farmington Hills has grown twice during COVID. So and and then there's a lot of right in the middle. The hotel, maybe three days a week, there's a lot, every, every company is different. But one thing that we're seeing for sure right now is they're coming back. Our occupancies are going up, tenant, the companies are giving firm dates as to when they're coming back. We're seeing a lot of April 1s in our portfolio coming back into the office. What does that mean? We don't know. But we do know that amenities are are a big part of what post-COVID is going to look like in the office world. Tenants want amenities. They want to be able to walk outside, they want to be able to have different options, they want to be able to, you know, do things much different than what they did before. But they are coming back into the office buildings. We're seeing it on a steady basis over these last several weeks. So that is a good thing, we believe.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No.
I have one more question. Some of the office buildings that are thriving have restaurants inside? Some of the office buildings where people go and they, is that allowed in our office buildings now?
Yes.
Okay, so if if that's needed, you could also add a small restaurant to your office building without, okay, so that could be additional amenities.
We do those, some are just called grab-and-gos, where they're, they're unmanned and you literally...
Right.
You know, but but they have fresh sandwiches, Continental, Sodexo, those companies do a lot of those. And then you have the the larger ones that are more full-service, with a pizza oven and a deli station, sushi. It just depends on the size of the of the tenant and what they want, because a lot of those are are subsidized by the company.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion? Dr. Bruce?
Make a motion. I resolve that the application for approval of an amendment to PUD Plan 5, 1993, dated January 4, 2022, and that the application for approval of Site Plan 6510, 2021, also dated January 4, 2022, are granted, and further resolve that the city attorney prepare the appropriate PUD agreement stipulating the final PUD approval conditions and authorizing the identified zoning deviations for city council consideration and final approval.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Bruce, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Newlin. Is this a roll call or straight up?
Straight up.
Okay. Any questions? Nope? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Next item is consideration of approval of appointments to various boards and commissions. Dr. Massey?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a motion that Sidney Rushing be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission for an unexpired term, and this term would end on 1 February 2025. Emily Collins be appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals for an unexpired term as an alternate. That term would end, again, on 1 February 2025. And for the Innovation, Energy, and Environmental Sustainability Commission Committee, Mr. John Aldred for a term to end 11 October 2023, Matthew Strickfaden to, for a term to end on, all these would end on 11 October 2023. So Matthew Strickfaden, Nicholas DeWitt, Mark Zachos, Aaron Peluzzi, Aaron Cottell, and Jennifer Whitaker, all to the IEES Committee.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Knoll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, it passes. Thank you all very much. We have been looking for new, young people to populate our boards and commissions, and if you want to be on a board or commission, just go to the new refreshed city website, and you will find a link to the boards and commissions and a way to apply online, and we would love to have you serve as a part of our community boards and commissions. We have several openings, be sure to check that out. Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of the transfer of ownership of a 2021 Class C and SDM liquor license with Sunday sales and dance permit located at 27406 West 8 Mile Road. I want to remind council that this would need a five-member yes vote in order to pass, and so we are just under the wire there. Hello?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the rest of the Farmington Hills Council. I am the attorney on behalf of Rob and Dan Mulligans. We're here to present our hopeful approval of our Class C and SDM license over at, on 8 Mile for the Mulligans Pub. These are my clients, the...
I'm Dan.
Hello.
Potential, hopefully, new owners of the pub there.
Any questions by council? And I see that you've passed all of the requirements by the Fire Department and Police Department?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and this is, I understand you want to be open by St. Patrick's Day, wouldn't you?
It's open now. We don't, we don't plan on changing nothing.
Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Is there a motion? Dr. Massey?
Yes. I would move that the city council hereby approves, moves to approve to Michigan Liquor Control Commission the request from Rob and Dan Mulligans, Inc. for the transfer of ownership of a 2021 Class C and SDM liquor license with Sunday sales, AM and PM, and dance permits from Mulligans Pub and Grub, Inc., located at 27406 West 8 Mile.
Support.
Been moved by Dr. Massey, supported by Councilmember Knoll. Is this a roll call vote?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Councilmembers Knoll?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Newlin?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Congratulations. Welcome to Farmington Hills.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Next item is consideration of approval of the Commercial Rehabilitation District Establishment and Exemption Certificate Policy. Our Economic Development Coordinator is here.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. Yes, this is the, to approve the policy created for the Commercial Rehabilitation District and certificate. So we did this together as a team assessing planning, economic development, as well as the city manager office, in order to get the policy into its best roots. We also had the attorney attorney draft and go over our our notes, so this has been drafted by him. And it really has been built with our city goals in mind, as well as public benefit, and what could potentially be taxable for an abatement incentive such as this.
Okay, are there any questions? Any comments? Okay, we've been going through this in study session, and I want to thank Councilmember Knoll for bringing this to our attention and working with our city staff to develop this plan and working through our city's council study sessions and our city attorney. Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make it. I'll make a motion that the city council authorize the city manager to approve the Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate Policy and to authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute the policy on behalf of the city.
Support. It's been moved by Councilmember Knoll, seconded by Doctors Massey and Bruce. Is this just a straight-up vote?
Straight up.
Any questions? Anybody has? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? It passes?
Thank you.
Unanimously. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of the agenda.
Madam Mayor? Yes, we are at the end of the agenda. I would move that we adjourn the meeting.
That's a good idea. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Newlin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now adjourned, and we will reconvene for our next regular meeting on March 21st. Good night, Farmington Hills.